Six. So I will, and I think we can do these together, approve these together. I will entertain a motion to approve the action, or to approve the minutes for open meeting, October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, for the executive session minutes of October fifteenth, to approve and retain, and the Operational Budget Subcommittee and Capital Planning Subcommittee Joint Open Meeting Minutes of October sixty, uh, six.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? And it's unanimous. Uh, next on the agenda is educational policy with the staff member request.
Sure, so according to enrollment of faculty children J one seventy, Algonquin faculty staff can request that their children attend Algonquin Regional High School. So Rebecca Duffy, who is a faculty member in fine and performing arts, is requesting that her son Finn attend ninth grade, beginning next year. And this, this request has my full support.
Any questions?
Make a motion to approve that request. Second.
All in favor? And that's unanimous.
Welcome Finn.
Uh, next up are two other, other approvals for DECA.
Sure, so as we've been trying to do this year, get our trip approvals out there a little bit sooner and earlier in the year so that you have them and we're not scrambling. These are two trips that every year we have DECA, we have such a wonderful DECA program that we send students to state competition and the international competition. So the first approval request, or the first proposal is for an overnight trip to the DECA Conference in Boston, that's a conference that happens every year. And the second trip is for the students to progress from, through that tournament into the second stage or the final stage, which is the International Conference, which is this year in Atlanta.
Any questions? Okay, so I will entertain, I'm gonna put these together, I'll entertain a motion to approve DECA's overnight field trip to Massachusetts DECA State Conference in Boston, March twelfth through the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-six, and to approve DECA's overnight field trip to the DECA International Conference in Atlanta, Georgia, April twenty-fifth to the twenty-eighth of two thousand twenty-six.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, and that passes unanimously. Next up is legislative update.
Sure, so the significant update is really around the local contribution study hearing that took place yesterday afternoon. So DESI is doing a listening tour across the state to hear how local contributions are impacting school budgets. And so there was testimony from superintendents, town leaders, school committee members, and students across the state. And I would say the general theme is that the, the current contribution rate is not supporting education in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. District shared information around needing year-over-year overrides. Those types of districts range from small rural districts to wealthy, wealthy districts in the Commonwealth to large districts. And so there was a lot of discussion around Proposition Two and a Half and how the limitations of Prop Two and a Half really limit funding education. The challenging increases that we're seeing in healthcare, labor costs, and costs in general. So I think that there was strong feedback to DESI. And hopefully, the result of that feedback in these hearings is some serious thought about how to fund education in the Commonwealth that supports towns and cities in a way that the burden is not solely on the taxpayers. And Becky also attended.
Yes.
It was very depressing, actually. Um, the other legislative updates, I think the one key area I just wanna highlight is the, on, DESI has created a study group focusing on AI. So they have a year of study to really put guidance in place for AI for districts. So John Parent, our IT Director, is on that study group, and we're watching that very closely. As you know, the Policy Subcommittee, or the Joint Policy Subcommittee is also looking at AI policy, looking at models. I think colleges and universities are ahead of the curve, we're using some of that work to drive a discussion. And, and I am getting more and more families and parents asking about, you know, what is our stance on AI? So I think it's, it's timely, and I think the work of DESI will help shape some of our work internally as a local district.
So that's different from the guidance that they put out in August?
Correct.
It's more, be more concrete expected or something?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Back to the first item you were talking about, was there, was there any discussion of legislative fixes to all this?
Yeah, so they, they didn't, they were just listening. So some people had some suggestions, you know, from, you know, removing Proposition Two and a Half, or making school budgets exempt from Proposition Two and a Half, to, there were, there was many suggestions. But I think what they're taking in are ideas, and then the committee will then generate potential solutions for a new contribution formula.
And which committee was that again?
It was the contrib, hang on, it was the Local Contribution Study Hearing, it was a spe, a special Subcommittee at DESI.
And it was something that was part of the, the state budget, where DESI was tasked with doing this, listening, having these listening sessions. This was the only virtual one, I think all of the others were in person at various spots throughout the state. And the first person who did speak yesterday was Senator Lewis, who chairs the Senate Education Committee. So I think there is a lot of interest at the State House in this, they're probably hearing a lot from their constituents.
My recommendation is that if it's a will of the committee, I can draft a letter on behalf of the school committee, that I can circulate through Jen and have this committee sign around a position on, on, you know, local contributions and how the current formula is impacting us.
Yeah, I'd be for that, but maybe this'll come up later when we talk about MASC meeting, but I know last year they had a resolution to exempt, I think, the foundation budget, was it the minimum local contribution, I think it was?
Two, for Prop Two and a Half.
Yeah, for Prop Two and a Half, which would be a big help, you know, I think exempting entire school budgets, it's probably a bridge too far, but.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Uh, next up is the MASC Joint Conference Update. Joan?
Uh, yes, um, I'd like to report, and Kathleen and I were both there, so I think Kathleen can join in. I, as you know, I was the delegate from the Regional School Committee, first time that I attended the delegate assembly, which was last Friday. It went very, it went very fast, that I've heard that this was the fastest it ever was, nobody knew what to really do. But you have this paper before you, and I just wanted to give you, there were only two things that we really voted on. The first one was the reauth, reauthorization of previously proved resolutions. These were going to, they, it expired at the end of the three years, so the bullets that you see below that, there's six of them, those are the ones that we voted unanimous to reauthorize. The other resolution was to remove the BMI testing from schools, and it, this goes back to eighteen thirty-two when that was instituted, and it was really just for, it was based on whites and men, and that, that was how, so they were gonna remove it completely. But if you look down at the red part, this was an amendment that was proposed by a nurse from Quincy, is where she wanted to add, MCAS urges the banning of the MBI, MBI screening in all public schools except when the student's healthcare provider requests the screening with a parent's parent guardian approval. The amendment carried in affirmative, fifty-six, four, and thirty-three, no, and then they voted unanimous to put that amendment into the resolution. So that was the report from the delegate. The other thing is, I attended a couple of sessions, nothing really to report back from the session, the sessions. The ones that I thought that I was going to get information on, I went on to one because of serving as the liaison to LPAC, I went to one that was about English as a Second Language, SEL. It ended up being more as if for a teacher than it was for a school committee, but I still stayed in that one to the end. And then I think Greg, we went to the one together, which was on a collaborative. And you can tell that the special ed funding and everything is, is a, is a big thing for every district. So the collaborative, they were talking about how they were structured, this, this one collaborative, I think, I'd have to see where it came from, but it's, right away, people started asking questions, and people wanted to know about the funding, how do you do this and this? So they really got them off of their presentation, what they wanted to show, how they did their collaborative, but everyone has so many questions about special ed funding. So that was a really good one. And the next, next year, the conference is gonna be November fourth through the sixth, and it's gonna be in Danvers this time, it's moving from Hyannis at the Doubletree Hotel. And Kathleen, I think you attended some other sessions.
I was there earlier in the week, Wednesday through Friday, and I think overlapped with you on Thursday, but I went to about eight sessions. I thought the keynote was really exciting, and offered quite a bit on really looking at how to manage conflict, very novel way, a lot of research related to that, thought that was worthwhile, did get to hear the new commissioner for the Mass Department of Education, and I was most definitely underwhelmed. I was really hopeful to be impressed, but that fell short. Sadly, looking at more standardized testing, and he seemed to be moving in that direction, and it just, and I will also say in contrast, there was little precious little to nothing about the mental well-being of students through the Commonwealth, or the people that serve them. I thought that was really bereft in the agenda, and I hope to, in a gentle womanly way, have that conversation with MASC in order to be really relevant. I thought that they missed the mark. I found things always that interested me, so I was in the fifty-year celebration of IDEA, something that, with Greg, something that I taught for years, and what I could see was the way they were positioning themselves to help with the chatter about special needs transportation on district placements, and all that that means for large and small communities, wealthy and not. And what they were saying is that it's generally a savings of thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars per student, when a collaborative is able to educate a child rather than a private setting. And I thought that was rather conservative, because Perkins School for the Blind was there, and I should think that that tuition would be far larger. So it got me interested in the collaboration. Thankfully Greg is sitting next to me, so I could pepper him with questions, not knowing, but they also wanted to position themselves as an extension of our school committee, because they work with our students, our students are their students. And so I suggested in my report that we invite them, so that we understand about Esbit Valley, where are they located, how many of our students are involved, and perhaps a combined meeting would be good as we look over all three settings. So I got a couple of new books to read. I, I think it could be more relevant, I think it could be more progressive, honestly. But I, I think the connections are always quite excellent in seeing what other school committee members are facing, like Julio coming out of receivership. You know, that was an interesting conversation, or talking with the superintendent of Brockton, and what they're facing. So really looking at rural schools and, and everything across the Commonwealth, and where we're positioned, and how that feels and how it looks.
The only addition is, you know, Joan's Award Banquet on Friday evening. So Joan was one of five people who were, who was awarded the MASC's Lifetime Achievement Award. So that was a lovely celebration of, of MASC and Joan. We had dinner with Joan and her husband, and we had a little mishap, we thought we lost a wedding ring, but we found it, so that was, that was, you know, got all of our energy up.
It did.
But again, it was just a testament to, you know, Joan and the District of Northborough, and the District of Southborough, and the region. We're very fortunate to have talented and dedicated school committee members, and it's been long, longstanding, so I think Joan exemplifies the professionalism and the dedication, and it was well deserved. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Greg, you've been too kind with those words. I just say, I'm very humbled, I, I, my tenure on these, this board, and also on Northborough, is just because I love education, and I love working with all of you. It's, it's, believe it or not, it's fun to time, it's to see how our families have grown while we've been here, we've had so many of our own children, Paul, graduating, grad, graduating from here, your children, and hearing about the successes, and just to see the growth of the schools, I remember when we used to meet in this small library, and I don't even know where it could be right now. It, it's just a lot of history, but it's been a lot of, working with a lot of great people, and having the leadership, and I'd like to thank you for your trust into me when you gave me the leadership, and Paul and I, we've worked on some evaluations for the superintendent, so that's always a learning curve. But it's, it's just very humbling, it was, it was a great evening, but thank you for your support, I appreciate it, thank you.
And the wedding ring was found.
Who's was it?
It was my grandmother's. I decided, I decided to wear something special, and my grandma's wedding ring was cut into thirds for her three sisters, and three sisters wore it, and then they, I got my mother's third. So I decided to wear it, and then I realized I didn't have it on. So Greg, I don't know where you went, but he went looking for it right away, and I realized it was lost.
It was the cocktail area.
It was a cocktail, that's it. And then Kelly Gannett from Northborough School Committee, she said, "Look in her purse", as I'm going up to the other part to see where, Greg went to the drinks, I went to the food, and wanted to see if it was in the gravy and the, and the cheese sauce. And it was, it was in my purse, so. But if I had to lose it somewhere, that was okay.
Well, thank you for. Thank you for the reports out. Are there any other comments or questions for any of our attendees or delegates?
The other thing I would say is, there's so much that we have as a great advantage to the stability of leadership, and I suggested to Greg, you know, one thing that I heard that people were looking for, which is plant management, and that always seems to make our lives easier when we hear things about what's needed in the schools, that there is such good eyes here, there's planning ahead, et cetera. And I do encourage you all to consider attending and driving MASC, contributing to MASC, so it is growing and is relevant for our work, because it's really the only place we have to park and learn about our roles.
Okay.
And the, the only other thing everybody, I brought back, the last day they had those canvas bags and pens, of course, and a notepad, so hope you can enjoy it. Thank you.
I wonder, you're just like stuffing your bag.
Hey. Hey. That's for my days on the Sunshine Fund.
Okay, so next up on our agenda is food supports in Northborough and Southborough.
Yes, so Mary Allen was hoping to be with us this evening, but was not able to, so we just wanna make sure the community is aware of the supplemental food resources that are available to the citizens of Northborough and Southborough. So we have the Northborough Food Pantry, the Northborough Friend Fridge, the Southborough Food Pantry, the Southborough Free Fridge. We also have Nutrition Sixty-eight, which is supported by the Rotary Club, and sixty, Nutrition Sixty-eight is the time when students leave on Friday to the time they come back to school on Monday, that's the, the number of hours. So the Rotary provides food bags for kids to take home for the weekend. And then we have local free meals, the community meals are served every Wednesday evening at six PM at the Trinity Church. Our Father's Table serves meals every Monday and Thursday at five PM. We also have available Feed a Neighbor, and all of this information is available on the district website. And then, you know, if you want any additional information, please reach out to Mary Allen Duggan, and, and she can point people in the right direction. And if people need holiday help for Thanksgiving, Northborough Helping Hands is available, and Southborough also has a grassroots group of families who also are donating Thanksgiving meals to families in need, so those are some of the resources that are available, and I think it just speaks to the giving communities that, that we serve.
Thank you, any questions or comments? So next up is the Student Support Services Department Presentation.
Sure, so it gives me a great pleasure to introduce Caroline Flynn, who is our Student Support Services Department Head, and she was gonna present an update on the department.
Hi, thank you for having me here, here this evening. Okay, so this is at the beginning of the school year, so these are all of members of our department, our liaisons, our speech and language person, our school psychologist, English Language Development, and our school adjustment counselors. These are our educational support personnel here at the high school, commonly known as our ESPs, and this afternoon, Helene Dejarz, and I've emailed saying that today is National Education Support Professionals Day. So I'd like to recognize them for all the work that they have done with our students, and they do provide academic assistance for our students, behavioral assistance for our students, and physical and personal care for our students. For our teachers, our liaisons, they are like the eyes and ears in the classroom, they collect data on our students, on our students' objectives, they are instructional assistants in the classroom for us, and they also build relationships with our students, some of them are one-on-one in the classroom, meaning one student to, to an ESP, or four students to, to an ESP in an inclusion classroom. And they're there with them, the consistency of being every there, with them every day in a classroom for a semester or for a whole year really promotes a lot of student success for them. There are two topics that I'd like to talk to you about this evening, one is the new IEP, and the next one is curriculum mapping that, that we've undertaken. So two years ago, when I was here, we were in year one of the new IEP in Massachusetts. So we participated in professional development for the district, and also professional development during our student support meetings. Last year was year two, and last year we implemented the new IEP, which meant that we went in and rewrote every new IEP for students on our caseload. And it wasn't just as simple as like copying and pasting the old IEP to the new IEP, there were new IEP wording that we had to use, there, the new IEP is very detail-oriented now for the parents, so we did that in collaboration and assisting each other, and also with the help of the professional development that we, that we had. I feel like there's been a lot of positive developments, I'll just talk about one, but one is with the new IEP, the post-secondary transition planning section is a very structured approach to this, and when you have that structure and more detail, it gives the parents a better understanding of seeing how we're assisting them in that with their post-secondary planning, for example, we have to take a look at how the disability is affecting the student in the workplace, or in their, in their community that they're in right now, or their living arrangements that, that we've had. So all of this is, I think, has enabled the parents to have a better understanding of how the IEP is helping them in their post-secondary transition. I really think the new IEP has also brought forth a more positive experience for us as we, as we sit there and develop this IEP for the whole year, and I think these changes are really helping our parents. The next thing I'd like to talk about is our transition curriculum. So a year ago, we were asked, all the departments were asked to do some curriculum mapping, and that, for us, that meant that we, Monique Cludier, who was my transition coordinator, and I, decided to take a look at our transition curriculum. So traditionally, our transition curriculum has been a planning menu with four topic areas delineated out into each grade level, and we decided to break that down a little bit further, and take those four topic areas, and put them across all four programs that we have here at the high school. So Monique and I began writing the, mapping out the moderate level transition curriculum, and we had some teachers volunteer and join us with that. So in TLC one, we have Hillary Koons, who's our speech and language person, and Amanda Davidson, who is the school adjustment counselor, who are working closely with those students who had volunteered to do, map out that curriculum. We have Lisa Darty, who's working in TLC two, who was head of that program, who was doing that, mapping out that curriculum, and we have Caitlin Hines, who is our CAP, our Community Action Program Person, who is working with us now to do that mapping out. So last year, when we had these people join us, we decided, we put forth and had a PLC, or Professional Learning Center is what we call it, we had one all semester last year, and we've continued that this year. And during that time, we've, we've taken input from, and feedback from our special ed liaisons, and phone plate Clark, and applied that to our mapping, our curriculum. And we also are trialing this with two of our students in a program, and we're taking data on that, and we'll make adjustments as we, as we move forward. And I just wanted to give you a model of, of what we are doing. So starting at the top, this is our, our moderate level, this is one of our topics, self-determination, and you can see that we've connected it to the portrait of the graduate, some of the objectives from the portrait of the graduate that apply to self-determination. And then as we move left to right, we have our essential questions, and then our goals and objectives that reflect off our essential questions, and we have unit lessons that we have set up for our liaisons to use within their learning centers to match our goals and objectives.
Sorry, and, uh.
Try to touch it.
Did I touch you?
Try to touch it.
Touch the screen.
Okay. I had this happen last time.
Just say keep it on.
Keep on, yeah.
Good time, y'all?
Uh, yeah, I don't know where the.
Should be keep it on.
Not in this session. Swipe down.
The position is so much nicer.
So we have essential questions, our goals and objectives connect to our essential questions, and unit lessons for them to connect to the goals and objectives and essential questions, and then we have our key resources for, for, for our self-determination level. And we are doing this for all four program levels, so, and, and we have four units within each program level. So at this time, I'd like to take some, a moment just to highlight some of our staff here. You know, we have a very compassionate and empathetic special education staff here in the building, and. And I'd just like to highlight our school adjustment counselors. We're very, very fortunate to have four school adjustment counselors here that work closely with our liaisons and our students on their goals and objectives. They also tend to reach across and work with other members of our educational community in the building. They work on the SAT team, our Students Assistance Team, with guidance and our administration. In a couple weeks, they will collaborate and pitch the education department on their suicide prevention curriculum. And they also assist in crisis intervention or conflict resolution, socio-emotional learning. So they really do a lot of small things, but that impact, I think, our educational community in a big way. And I just wanted to recognize them for their efforts. And so this year, again, we've worked on the new IEP. We've worked on our curriculum mapping. And we're working to support all of our students in the building. And if I'm here, if you have any questions, I mean...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments?
Yes.
So, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Congratulations on year two of IEPs. And I'm glad that it sounds to me like you're really embracing it. And it sounds like your team is really doing well. The only question I have is, and it sounds like the parents are really enjoying the content. Question I might have is, how are the teachers, because the teachers participate in all the IEPs, how are they feeling about the new IEPs? And how are they transitioning to sort of updating those? Is it consistent?
From what I've heard, the teachers like the new format. Okay, I think they find it, you know, there's definitely a format where it says, these are the accommodations here in this section, and this is how the student responds to the accommodations. And then down below, we have modifications. So those are separated out. So they have told me that they like it, that it looks more structured to them, and it's easier to read for them.
And it's consistent across the board. So every single one of your staff would give the same format to all the teachers?
Yes. And we distribute these IEPs at the beginning of each year. And I set forth the time at the first three days of our PD period to meet with the teachers on students that we need to meet on before school starts. And we, they have a copy of the IEP, and we go over the IEP with them. So there's a lot of one-on-one conversations that we have with the members of the team, of a students team, that we can have at the beginning of the year or any time that we need to.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So next up is the additional optional appointment to regional school committee, subcommittee, or liaison. And I will just turn that over to Joe, or did you want to say?
Yes, so there is an LPAC, the Multilingual Parent Advisory Council. So I think that is an open position. That'd be great to appoint a liaison to LPAC. The next meeting is December 11th here, I believe. It begins at 6:00 PM.
And I made the request to the chair and the superintendent because I am the representative on the K-8 to the LPAC. And I went to the first meeting, which was back in October, October 16th. And I found it very worthwhile. Can I just give a brief update? So at that meeting, they have babysitters for the kids, they have some translators for the parents who do not speak English, and they also provide dinner for them. So at the first meeting, they asked, people took a survey and asked, what were the things that they really were looking for? What are their parents really looking for? And the first thing that they said they were looking for was in the area of recreation and anything to get them involved in the community. So when I heard that they were looking into things in recreation, when I was going in the town of Northborough, I went to the rec department. And Ally Lane, I just said to her, do you have brochures? Give me something that I could take back, that these parents could use as a source. And I took a lot of the information. And then I looked at it, some of the recreation things that they had were like $280 for a session, $420 for a session. And I looked and I said, oh, this is not going to work. I was looking for some things that, you know, were more economical. But then Ally gave me a call back, Ally Lane, who is the recreation director in Northborough. And it was like amazing. She said, well, we have scholarships. I said, scholarships? And she said, yes. She said, they have like right now, what's left in the scholarship fund is like $3,000. And the parents would apply for a scholarship to attend one of these sessions. But Ally says they do not fund it 100% because they want to make sure that the parents make a commitment themselves. So they fund some of these programs for kids after school, recreation, up to 75% or 50% off. And in sports, they also offer financial packets. So I asked Ally, I asked Ally, Ally, would you like to come? And I also checked with Silva, is that, would you like to come to the December 11th meeting and just explain? And because Ally was, she's so excited about what she does. And so Ally will be coming to the December 11th meeting to give information to the parents about what's out there in our communities that these students can take care, that they can take advantage of. So my request was, since I'm doing it on Northborough K-8, I'd like to also do it on, as a regional member.
I think that makes sense. Does anyone have any objection or would like to do that instead? So thank you for...
I'll share it. Thank you.
Okay, so next on the agenda is approval of grants and donations. And it looks like we have three.
Sure. So we have, they are in your packet, and this is always one of the best parts of this, of our meetings, is to see the wonderful support we receive from our community. So in your packet, we have, the Harbinger is asking to accept the donations for, from two anonymous donors, and then three individuals who are listed on that letter. And that sum total is $247.50. They use those funds for a variety of things, but primarily to print the newspaper. Do you want me to go one by one and then, okay. There's also a letter in there proposing to accept funds for attire that is being used on the show. And that is funded in a total of $2,589.84. And that is to purchase or to rent attire from Cousins Concert Attire. And that would be kindly accepted from the Northborough-Southborough Music Association, our wonderful partners there. And then finally, another partnership we have that we get a lot of wonderful help for our students out of is through the Northborough Cable Access Television. NCAT has kindly offered to donate three camcorders, five microphone kits, 43 camera bags, one video slate, and two camera setup cards.
Any questions? Yep.
I do, what is the attire? Why $2,600 for attire?
I'm sorry, I don't know the, it's in the letter, but I don't have the details. I'm sorry.
Marching bands usually have some sort of attire. But I know that the music association has almost always exclusively given to private lesson support and for scholarships for graduating seniors. So that's a lot of money diverted away from that kind of capacity building. And I know that when we became Titans, that the change in uniforms was a part of the rollout within our budget, was that not?
Yes, it was partly through a grant of $100,000. And then the remainder was part of our operational budget.
So is there a reason that...
I think we need to get, we need to find out more exactly what this is. We can definitely get back.
Yeah.
Yeah, I find it surprising. I've never had attire aside from the black dress.
And I think it is the, I think it is the, that, the black dress attire for when students wear, get dressed up for our concerts. That's what I think it was for. But I can find out for sure and get back to you. I'm sorry, I do not have that.
We did a lot of fundraising to have it go into something that maybe we should be supplying in, you know, rather than direct services, direct support. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? So it sounds like we're gonna hold on until we get more information, or would you need approval on the attire?
I suspect we can wait to get this fully approved till the next meeting. I don't think that, I don't think it would be hung up in the meantime.
Is that the will of the committee? Any thoughts?
My only thought is, they did donate the money. So it was something that they did support and approve. I think we definitely can look into more details of the exact reason and have a conversation at a subsequent meeting around, is this something that we need to include in our operational budget and not use some of our outside supporters to fund these types of requests?
Thank you.
Okay. So then that said, I will, I'm gonna put all three of them together. And I will accept a motion to approve, as listed in the agenda, the approval of the online donations during the month of September to the Harbinger totaling $247.50. To approve the donation from Northborough-Southborough Music Association to purchase student performance attire in the amount of $2,589.84. And to approve the donation of used equipment from NCAT to the Applied Arts and Technology Department, including all of these things listed in here.
So moved?
Okay, and all in favor? Any opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Okay. So that passes seven in favor, one extension. Next in the packet is the student representative report, superintendent's report to the committee, starting with the student.
Sure. So I have to share that Maddie Wilson, who's our student rep, has emailed me at the very start of this meeting and had sudden emergency, says she could not make it to the meeting and didn't, wasn't able to have her replacement, her alternate, come. I have her slides, and I met with her about her slides a week ago. So I will try to do a quick overview of the concepts that she had brought to my attention. And then I, maybe we can ask her for greater depth on that at the next meeting. Plus, she always presents such nice slides, which we always remark about. So there were really, so here are the members. I'll let her kind of revisit this slide and introduce our members. But Jean is over here. She's one of our, one of our members at SAC, who's here to kind of observe. But I don't think it's the elected alternate, so I don't know that it's suitable for you to join us here to present. There are two things that Maddie was going to share. One was that students have brought up a friction that they see with our school's push to make sure students don't have their cell phones on them and distracting them during instruction. And when we have Alice drills, or they worry that in a lockdown event, that access to their phone would be something that they'd really want and be able to have access to. It's a tension a lot of schools, maybe every school who puts in any cellphone restrictions has to face, and that's something we're grappling with. So she, I will ask her to revisit that as a topic. We're certainly not, it's not new to us. We're unusual or unique to Algoquan. She has some feedback about lunches. Lunches continue to be popular. She's asking, has shared that the third wave of lunches, sometimes the amount of lunches that are left available don't always meet the needs of the students who want them. So that's something I've shared with Assistant Superintendent Lavoy. And that's something we can work on. She shared all the many different things we have going on around our school, including neck of working, networking night. There's a student council gift card drive. We've talked about Once Upon a Mattress, I invite you to attend. That goes up tomorrow night. You have your tickets there. There's an increasingly popular Halloween costume that's supported by our APTO via gift card. The pep rally is next week. There's a dodgeball tournament. Last week, we had the unified basketball game between the Southborough First Responders and our unified basketball team called Borough's Ballers. That was our second annual of that. And then we have had our fall concerts, which were on October 23rd and October 30th. So there's no shortage of things happening here at school. And then there's some information about one of our clubs, which is National Honor Society, which is, you know, certainly a club that's been around for a long time and one we're very proud of. So I will ask Maddie to revisit any of these topics that a month from now still remain relevant and then provide updates as she sees. Okay. And so, and then I am pleased to share some thoughts that I have at this point in the year. We just wrapped up the first quarter, and I'm happy to share that we continue to do work that is important but not necessarily urgent. That's kind of something that you may have heard before, that we're always working on, when we're working our best, I think we are working on highly important topics and doing that methodically and strategically. And I feel like we are doing that currently. So on your slides, in your packet, I provided update, updates in that right-hand maroon side on what is on the left-hand side. Those are slides you've previously seen, if you do not recall them. The first quarter, we focused very closely on what's called UDL. That's Universal Design for Learning. It's a framework for thinking about reducing barriers for all students to achieve to their fullest potential. It's not a curriculum adoption. It's really a new way or a way of thinking about instruction that we are asking our teachers to adopt and to try out and to grow into their teaching. Excitingly, the, our department heads are the ones who have taken this on and have been leading the effort on the UDL adoption and have been, we have a team of teachers and teacher leaders who are doing that work. So a team of teachers convened and collaborated over the summer to develop what amounts to a staff meeting curriculum over the course of the first half of the year to deliver UDL instruction to staff. So sometimes our staff meetings can feel a little bit like administratively reporting out. And this year, we're really focusing entirely on the pedagogy of UDL. And the delivery of that pedagogical training is from teacher, department heads, and teacher leaders in the building who have UDL training. So we had three staff meetings in a row where we, teachers were trained on UDL in the style of UDL. So I can't quite get into all the UDL features, but the training itself reflected the concepts of UDL that we're asking teachers to adopt. That work will be ongoing into second semester, so that UDL team will, as their duty, be working and be available to coach teachers as they're trying out new things. So this team of eight teachers, some are department heads, but most are fully, you know, our regular teachers, are going to be working and being able to go and visit classrooms to help teachers to refine their practice with UDL as the framework and mindset. As well, we, some of the, one of the things we've heard Caroline Flynn update, we committed last year to doing a unified version of curriculum mapping. That was a not surprising result of our NIASC reporting out, that that's something we need to do in a uniform fashion. Last year, we spent much of the year just identifying the elements and the timeline and the benchmarks for coming up with curriculum mapping. And the departments now have begun that work. And so that slide you saw with that table with all those pieces and components in there, that was what that work looks like as an end result for one unit of study in one portion of special education. And all the departments are slowly populating documents exactly like that for each of the, each of the departments and each of the units that they teach. That will take roughly about two years because some departments are doing things like adopting a whole math curriculum, let's say. And so they will do more of that work next year while departments who are not doing major curriculum adoptions are going to be pouring a lot of their effort into that work. So curriculum mapping continues. We are building on the template adoption from last year. Career awareness is, I feel like every meeting, we're talking a little bit about career awareness. We have, we named it as a district, as an action step for this year to expand further students' career awareness. Our summer internship program had 24 students participate in it. Our in-s... Our in-school or in-school year internship program continues to grow, and in the spring, we will yet again do a major whole-class junior event that is exposing students to different careers, and those are just a few of the things that Michelle Kalin does. So we're really excited at the direction she is taking that, that, it's not a department, it's, she's part of our administrative team, but she continues to deliver exciting results. And then as well, we are exploring innovation career pathways. That's a DESI program we've referenced here in this, at this meeting, and she is leading the, the efforts to just identify whether or not that might be a good fit for us. That would be a multi-year undertaking that you would be certainly updated on as it progresses. And then we've talked a little bit, quite a bit about the graduation requirements that we, that this committee approved last, requirements shift that the committee approved in October to change. That was one of our really critical benchmarks in identifying the weaknesses of our program of studies and how they need to be improved, and once they're improved, how do we just improve the experience for our students? The first segment of that work and the benchmarks really represented a lot of stakeholder engagement. So I've been speaking with this group, but as well, I've been speaking with our student council, our school council, the APTO, the student leaders, and our staff. So, and then, not necessarily intentionally, but then the, we've had a few media outlets cover this as a major shift because our school had not undergone a, a major shift like this. So I feel confident that our stakeholder engagement has, has a goal or as a benchmark has been met, and yet the work of improving the program of studies will continue. There's a small group called the Post-Secretary Success Working Group that is looking closely at all the particulars of what it looks like to make this shift, because it's one thing to make in graduation requirements change, but it's quite another to identify what are the outcomes of that change and what are the, you know, the potential courses that need to emerge from that? What are the costs related to launching new courses? What are the staffing implications that come along with retiring? One graduation requirement, replacing it with another. So this gets really detailed and granular really quickly, and it needs a team to help us do that. So that, that group has met monthly since August, and their work is, is, is continuing with, and delivering results. We're excited about that work. As the, the next part of the year goes on, we will start to look at DESI guidelines, DESI deadlines related to that innovation career pathway, is to, again, monitor to see whether or not that's a grant-funded opportunity that is a good fit for our community and our students. Those are updates on some of our major strategic, our goals for this year. Yes, Kathleen?
Pursuant to the student concerns about the Alice drill, one of the things, I had taken a webinar with the governor of New York. I'm not sure who else was on there. There were thousands. Anyhow, it was on the cellphone ban, and one of the things that was really clear from police is they do not want children on their phones. They want them paying attention. They want them listening to instructions, and they don't want any sounds on the sound, on the phones to be giving them away. The children should know that this was a very, and to me, that was my first thought as a parent too, right? You know, being able to get ahold of my kid. But that just bled through any of that anxiety with very good, clear reasons why phones aren't necessary at that time, and, and how they would be detrimental to their safety. So I'm not sure how that message can get out to the children. I felt like that was very, very reasonable.
Thank you.
I can just share that at the Meli, when Melican Middle School adopted the cellphone policy there, where they use yonder pouches, the school resource officer was at the parent meeting when they first were introducing it, and that was one of the questions that many parents asked, and the school resource officer had, was very effective in explaining kind of that security perspective of that not only is it not preferred, that it actually can be an impediment to the appropriate responses, and then also had follow-up individual conversations with some parents who were particularly focused on that. So I think that is a, a resource we have to help educate about that particular concern.
So it sounds to me like it's something you probably should think about, having them in.
Having this so early.
The school resource officer.
Sure.
Yeah.
So it's, I mean, if it was done at Melican, probably should be done here, because this has already been in place for three, four months, yeah?
Yep.
So I think the, the difference is the yonder pouches and no access. We don't have the yonder pouches. Students would still have access currently if they exited their
Still in the room with the cellphone.
classroom. So I think that, I think we definitely can have Officer Sullivan present. I think we need to look forward at the legislation that's going to potentially pass and then, and then have those meetings and make sure we're answering parents' questions. So I think we have some time, maybe this spring, and we'll watch the legislation move through.
And there are other states, I think New York is about a year ahead of where we are, so knowing how they've responded and how they've, how they've kind of addressed this tension, I think will be helpful, because there are people who are already a year ahead of where we need to be on this topic.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is enrollments.
So in your packet is the October 1, 2025 enrollments. So there's no real significant changes from last month's enrollment report. I did include the NASDEC enrollment projections for 25, 26. They really project out 25, 26 to 2035, 2036. What's interesting with Algonquin's enrollment during that period of time, it's, it really is fairly stable for the most part, but I will share that Northborough K through 8 enrollment is, is plateauing, so there's no, no real increase. It's pretty steady. Southborough's enrollment, K through 8, is projected to increase 22 percent. So, you know, I think when we look in outward years, it's something that we'll need to pay close attention to, as it will impact budgets and the proportionate share of assessments for each of the communities. But again, the more outward years we look at, the less, you know, accurate one could say that the data is, but that was an interesting takeaway from the enrollment reports that we received that we were not expecting.
Questions?
And then the financial reports. I'll turn it over to Becky.
Okay, so first, I will start with those accounts that are showing as over expended, or the two new accounts that we have for the report that's dated October 31st are the health services account, and that is because we did bring on board a new float nurse that would service the 10 schools throughout the district. Conceivably, we, or we hope that this physician will actually reduce the amount that we will require in the substitute line item, and it will also give us consistency of someone who's here who knows our students and who knows our building. So, so that is a new expense that's showing on that line. And then also our health services, special education line item, and that is due to some additional OTPT services that were required for some of our students from an outside agency. And so you can see the accounts where we have taken the money from to, to cover those over expenditures. In terms of the report that is included in the packet, you can see that we do have 1.3 million on the bottom line, which is about 4.56 percent of the operational budget. I will note that there are three line items that, for some reason, the encumbrances were removed, and these are large, show larger balances than we would normally expect to see, and that is in the short-term subs line, the school choice and charter school line, and the transportation athletics. And those encumbrances have been put back in place, and so you will see that reflected in next month's report. But at this point, there, I do not have any concerns with the monthly general fund report. Do you want me to just keep going, and then we can do it all at once?
Sure.
Okay. And then lastly, the revenue report. A couple of new items that we received over the month of October. First was our first quarterly payment of special education circuit breaker funds, and that is for both the tuition and for our transportation. And then we also received a Medicaid reimbursement, and that is reimbursement for eligible services that have been provided to students that we are able to bill for. Other than that, you're gonna see the fiscal revenues in terms of the state aid that we receive on a monthly basis, our investment income, and then we also saw some additional athletic fees and parking fees.
Are there any questions or comments?
Seem to be very curious tonight. When you were, no, I forgot. Oh, was the monies coming from the state as much as you expected, given from Medicaid? What are the Medicaid services that we do provide, and was the money that could be billed to Medicaid available, given what's happening with budgets?
The money is available, yes. Yes, that money has been set aside by the state, because they do receive that money. From the federal government's budget is a year ahead of what the state budget is, so we did have those funds available, and it would be for like OTPT, SLP services, things that are rendered within the school setting.
Are those a threat for next year, then, Medicaid?
We have not heard anything about that, but we are watching.
I think there's uncertainty in every, in every level of federal funding.
Yeah, yeah. That one hasn't specifically come up, but, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, so I will entertain, see if I can do this one correctly this time. I will entertain a motion to accept the fiscal year 26 monthly general fund report as of October 31st, 2025, until audited, and to vote to approve the function codes that are listed in your packet that are over expended in fiscal year 2026, and the statement of revenue for fiscal year 26.
So moved?
Second?
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, and it's unanimously passed.
I forgot I had grants too.
One more.
Forgot about that, sorry. So also, in your packet are the grants that the district has received as of, I would say probably the end of October. This is something that we do like to share with the committee on an annual basis. They listed out are the title grants, so we do receive Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV, as well as the IDEA, which is for special education services. I do just want to note that we did see a decrease in the IDA funds compared to fiscal year 25. It was a decrease of, of about $80,000 from the prior fiscal year, and that is due to some of the, the reporting. It's based on what we report on our end-of-year report in terms of our caseload, so it's not, this is not an impact of the federal government situation. It's just based on our numbers. We also have some state grants that we've received. We continue to receive the CHPE grant, which is for our health, and that was actually a continuation where we received an additional $60,000, and that is to implement the new standards. And then we have a proficiency outcomes in world language, and that is $27,000, as well as an interpreter in education trading, which is something new that we've received, so that will allow us to provide funding to help some of our interpreters either further their certification or to even bring onboard new interpreters. And then lastly, the hate crimes prevention. We've received this previously as well, and this is for $20,000. So overall, we receive about a half a million dollars in grants, a combination of both federal and state grants. And so this would be something that I would ask the committee to approve for acceptance.
Are there any questions or comments on any of those grants?
Remind me, Becky, we don't budget for this, so this is just extra.
This is, this is in addition to what we have on our operational budget.
See, if you look at our bottom line balance, you have the operational and all of our revolving accounts and then our grants.
But I would say that there are things that we typically plan to have on the grants, because I think that's what we were getting at, right?
That's what I'm getting at. So I guess my point or observation is, if these grants were to go away, we'd have to come up with $500,000. These aren't extra, largely.
There, there are some things I can say for some of the state grants, which are competitive grants that we apply for, that feel more like we're able to go beyond what we might have done. And so if we had to move these into the operational budget, some of those things, we wouldn't necessarily move into the operational budget. We might do them in different ways, but there are some things that if particularly the federal grants went away, we would be working together to say, how do we move these things into the operational
I think that's something that we should all be thoughtful on. So about $380,000
budget?
is probably the federal side of things, and so we should just be thoughtful on that.
Yeah.
No questions?
I have a question. Do you know what the hate crimes prevention grant that we get, what do we typically do with that, kind of programs or things?
So this is our second year of having that. It is a competitive grant, and we have done several things and continue to. This year, we are using it primarily to support restorative justice professional development for teachers and educators throughout the system, but it has also, it also this year and last year helped support our Changemakers for Good program, peer mentoring program that's in the middle and high school. And in addition, last year, it was used for, to support Story Bridge project, which also is, you know, again, all of these things are, you know, various different ways that we're trying to reduce incidence of bias in the community, which is really the goal of the grant. So those are some examples.
Thank you. And as you can tell, Stephanie is deeply involved with each of these grants and does so much to apply for them and make sure that we are in compliance with what we are supposed to be doing as well, so.
As well as, yeah, and as well as Helene for the IDA grant. So there's a team of people who are working on these, and Selvi for the proficiency outcomes in world languages.
And the interpretation.
There's a lot of work by a small team to write these grants, and, and many of these are competitive, and they've been very successful.
Yeah, the IDEA was the ones that most concerned me. I mean, as I understand it, you know, that's been on the auspices of the Education Department, which is going away apparently. And, I mean, to echo John's point, I think we need to be more than mindful, but we should make noise. You know, this is, this one has bugged me forever, because it's never been fully funded. It was, I mean, it's been traditionally like 40 percent funded, something like that, so. And the idea that you want to take money away from kids with disabilities is just abhorrent.
And I think their numbers increased by 42 percent, if I remember correctly.
Oh, excuse me.
But I mean the numbers of students.
Oh, I thought you meant the percentage.
So the need is going up, and you're right, it's on, it's not fully funded.
Yeah, nowhere near it, so.
I think that there is a strong advocacy, advocacy group, you know, advocating for, for funding of IDEA. It is a law, but it's something that when we present the preliminary budget, we are going to talk about what are our liabilities and risks, and how do we mitigate those if, if we have a shift in funding in any one of these grants? Because to your point, John earlier, you know, our, our operational budget is only part of our story of how we, how we fund education. There's grants, there's revolving accounts, and if we lose any one of those, it has a significant impact on our bottom line.
I just think, I don't know what we can do exactly, but.
Well, I think we can write, you know, we can.
Yeah, add this to your list of letters, I guess.
Yes.
You were mentioning the strong support group.
There's all sorts of advocacy groups. I can work with, we can work with our NSPAC and, and write a joint letter from the school committees and NSPAC to our legislature and advocate. So we do need approval of these grants.
I'll do approve all.
To approve all the grants that are listed for a total of $480,622.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you. So the capital, fiscal year 27 capital plan.
Sure. So just very quickly, since the last meeting where a draft was presented, the capital planning subcommittee met. Keith did some work reorganizing and taking the feedback. And I think we had a productive meeting and made some shifts. The total capital expenditures equals $477,000. And again, that will be apportioned by the regional agreement and assessment. It's more aligned than in what we said we were going to do over the next five years in terms of funding around 450 to 500,000 consistently in capital projects. And this, the hope is to get a vote this evening on this document.
Is there any, are any questions or comments?
It looks like there's two items that are in there, but have no value for them. Is that on purpose or are we missing?
Which, Chris, which?
It's like the intrusion alarm upgrade, or maybe I'm looking at.
No, no, you're looking, looking at it correct. The reason why there is not a number with the intrusion alarm is because just recently we were unable to move that into what will be part of the security system upgrade in FY '28 for that very large number. So we were able to incorporate that as part of it. And then the second one is the adjustments for the energy efficiency grant is, is changing for that particular project that Mike Gorman's been exploring. And he had to reach out and get those updated numbers and he didn't have them yet. The company has not been responsive and it's unfortunate because I believe potentially that grant opportunity might have passed. So we, I wanted to keep it there, keep it on the docket and then certainly be able to explain why.
You're welcome. Good catch. That was a task.
Any other questions? Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year 27. Are we all for you or just the fiscal year 27?
Fiscal year 27 through 32.
32.
32.
Capital improvement plan as presented in your packet. So move.
Second?
Okay, all in favor? Okay, and that passes unanimously. Budget priorities.
So also in your packet are the FY '27 budget priorities. So we did take the feedback from the last regional school committee meeting. Then you will see the red line document. And again, the goal is to, you know, have the school committee vote on these, but any changes or recommendations, we are open to feedback.
Are there any comments, additional changes, statements on this, on the budget priorities as presented in the packet? Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year 2027 budget priorities as presented in your packet. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? And that passes unanimously. Budget calendar.
So Cheryl has done an excellent job maintaining the budget calendar. So we will continue to add key milestone dates. I will share that last evening Keith and Becky presented the regional capital plan to the Northborough Financial.
Financial planning.
Financial planning. Each town has a different name.
Right.
So I think they had a lot of questions, but they did an excellent job presenting the plan and answering those questions. The next milestone too is next, the December meeting to present the preliminary budget to the committee.
Okay, and next up is old business, none at this time. And then policy development and/or distribution. In your packet, you'll find a draft of the new competency determination policy J-400.
So the goal is to bring this policy for approval at the December 3rd open combined meeting. This is really unique to Algonquin. If you can review this policy in preparation of that meeting and send any feedback to Jen, we can continue to add, incorporate that feedback. This policy is due by the end of December and Sean has to submit to, to DESI more detailed plans as well.
Just a cursory look, like I think just for people's awareness, like this is a little different because it's adding some requirements that weren't there before. For example, U.S. history was not a previous MCAS-tested assessment and it's just adding that. So it's something to, like as you're, as you're looking at, it's not just a transfer of like the MCAS, what MCAS was to a new, new piece.
So at this time, there is a second public comment. Is there any comment at this time? Seeing none, personnel?
So we have the personnel report as of November 19th and we have two appointments. We have Beth Thor who retired at the end of last year is now back with us as a math interventionist. And then we added a new member to our food services team, which was needed. So that was a welcomed addition. And then we had a couple resignations, a tutor and then an ESP position. We were trying to find people to fill those open positions.
Okay, so next to communications, none at this time. Pills and payrolls are done electronically. So finally, agenda items for next month. Anything that people want to add at this time?
Is there the possibility of inviting the collaborative?
So I was thinking, I was thinking at our April combined open meeting. I liked your idea of all three committees hearing from the collaborative and what they offer and how they support our district.
Any additional items can be sent via email to me if you have, if things come up in between then. So at this time, I think I'd like to move to, that we adjourn into, move, that we move into executive session without intention to reconvene in an open meeting in order to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Algonquin Regional Teachers' Association as an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair. So declared, so not to reconvene an open session. I got closer that time. We'll take a motion. Do you have to create a move?
I think you move great, so second.
I moved, okay, yes, second. So that has to be roll call. Chris?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Sean? Kathleen? Chris?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes and that's it.